I would like to call this meeting of the January Tassle Town Council Meeting to Session, and I would ask you to join me by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask for Reverend Zach Hatch, Pastor DePizzi, and I met the church, and member of the Historic Review Board of the Town of Tassle, to have our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Hatch.
Good morning. Gracious God, we come to you today, we are thankful for this day that you've given us. God, we come here tonight thanking you for allowing us to live in this place, this beautiful place to call home, this place that you have blessed, and we feel blessed to live here. God, we ask that you be with us tonight, be with the council tonight, we ask that all that is said and all that is done, give glory to you, and God, we ask that you be with us as we continue to make, we ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
We have some special presentations to be made tonight, and I have to ask you all for a point of personal privilege for just a moment, so I can share a little story with you concerning our first presentation. A few weeks ago, with the passing of my friend and longtime colleague, Mr. Lucian Perry, I was reminded of many opportunities I had had when Lou would take time out of his own busy schedule, and Sandra did too, I might add, to speak to my senior government classes upon occasion. They would do that during our study of the Civil Rights Unit, because I wanted my students to have the opportunity to understand what the civil rights movement was all about from really a perspective of what it was to their community, not only their country, but here in Tassle as well. Lou would recount how he grew up with young African-American friends and white friends here in Tassle, and they played sandlot ball together, and they ate at each other's dinner tables, and they even spent Saturday nights at one another's home. But sad but true, on Monday morning, those same young boys were not able to go to school together because of the laws in the Commonwealth of Virginia at that time. Laws at that time required the young African-American youth and white youth to attend separate schools. He shared how he was, as a teenager, riding a bus every day to Tassle County High School in Bluefield, where he and other Tassle County African-American youth, young people, those from Tassle, as well as Bluefield, as well spoken as, were bused each day, some of them more than an hour and a half one way, for one reason, the color of their skin. He did not share this out of anger, he didn't share it out of bitterness, but he shared it out of his memories as a young boy growing up here. And his story helped me and my students better understand what segregation was really all about. Thanks to Lou, my students and their teacher were better able to understand that era in our country, much more so than we could have by reading a textbook, much more than could have been outlined by their young teacher at the time. He could share from his personal experiences, firsthand accounts of one of the biggest challenges that I suspect this community ever saw. He also shared how everyone in this community did not easily accept that approaching change. Nevertheless, Lou was quick to point out that Tassle moved forward with integration, really much more easily and readily than other communities did at the same time. He shared how the principal at the time, Eugene Ross, and how the teachers at the time in the 1960s at Tassle High School accepted the adjustment and made several dozen African-American students welcome to Tassle High School. Change had to be difficult for those young people, not to mention the older people, but they stood up and accepted the challenge of their day. They made it possible and easier for their school and for their community to move forward. They made the future better for us, the generations that would follow. Integration came to Tassle in the 1960s, it should have come a lot sooner, but when it did arrive, people like Lou Perry led the way for a better and brighter future for all of Tassle's citizens. Thanks in part to those changes, Lou would become an outstanding teacher and an outstanding coach for scores of Tassle's young people. He was a great coach, he was a sports legend himself, but perhaps most important, Lou was a gentleman, he was a friend. Lou Perry was the role model that young people then and today need. Thank you, Coach. I'm gonna ask Sandra if she would come up. Resolution of Honor. Whereas from the beginning, the Tassle High School baseball program in 1978, Coach Lucian Lou Perry has been a central figure in the community, and this community is feeling an enormous loss. Whereas Coach Perry was a mentor to all who knew him and focused daily on building the character of youth, whereas Coach Perry over the years has taught by example, not only to youth but also to our community, how to respect and appreciate one another as athletes and as citizens. Whereas Coach Perry has established a criteria for future generations, future coaches, leaders of all types, to try and follow, which is the difference in being a team player other than just playing for the team. Now therefore, may it resolve that I, Terrance DePizzi, Vice Mayor of the Town of Tassle and the citizens concurring, do hereby commend Coach Perry for his excellent community service and present this token of appreciation to Coach Perry's family with our condolences. Adopted this fourteenth day of January 2020.
He's a blessed man to live in this community, and the heart and love and appreciation and respect and honor shown to him will forever live in our town. Thank you so much.
We also have other special recognition this evening, and I'd like to address that just briefly. I'm very appreciative tonight for the work that was done recently by some members of our community that all of us have very much enjoyed over the past several weeks. I'm talking about the work that was completed by Claudine Marshall, Kim Santala, Donnie Crewit, and his public work staff to bring back the unique beauty of Tassle's Main Street this winter. Claudine had an idea, she had a dream, and that vision became reality due to her partnership with Kim and members of our town staff who worked together to bring that vision to reality. I know you all have put in many long hours to pull in or to pull this transformation off, but it was well worth it. I have heard literally from scores, and I mean scores, of people who were excited and overjoyed to see Tassle's unique Main Street lights recreated this season. I hear it all the time, I heard it even before it came to this meeting tonight from two people. It's ongoing, and we want to recognize you, and we would like to ask you to come forward and accept our appreciation.
I get to hug Dr. Wendy. Terry, I've been hugging along. Thank you, Terry. I wish everyone who helped put this together could be here this evening, but for some reason or another, they're not here. But with honor, Terry has to know, when I'm happy, I get teary. With honor, I accept this recognition on behalf of the garden collaboration, Claudine helped with that, ladies came out, we had, I think, like fourteen volunteers that day, and some of them are a little crooked, we'll tweak them next year, I promise, along with doing other things. And again, to our town manager, thank you for believing in this project, and Terry was just wonderful in supporting me, and I do want to say my grandson's here tonight to be happy with this recognition as well, Chase from away from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. So anyway, I could talk forever about our Main Street and our Main Street lights. It always is better with another year, it will get better. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Here. You did. Okay, introduce new employees to the police department.
I want to apologize for not getting this put on the agenda earlier, I should have done that, I did. I've got four new employees since last time I think I brought forward to council, so I'd like them to stand up, be recognized, and tell you a little bit about, one on the far right of there is Craven Teague, he comes to us from the county and has several years of experience, me and him started at Sheriff's Office together, and I think he worked with Dave Fox, he had a lot of experience, and I think that he's a great asset to be here with us at this time. Next to him is Cody Thomas, he had come from Bluefield, and he's a young charging go-getter, so I think he's going to be here for several years also. And then beside him is Steven Bowman, who had come out of the military, come from Marines, and come to join us from the Sheriff's Office, and I think he's very much enjoying his time here and hopefully for many more years. And then we have Jason Rutland, who is from Bluefield also, and I think he's also enjoying the camaraderie and also the community, it's been very welcoming to each and every one of them, and I appreciate everything that y'all do to make this an enjoyable place to work.
I just want to mention to you, understand, stay away from the limousine. I'd like to add one other thing to it, there's always been a perception of police officers and their potential to maybe give favor to fellow employees. I'm not gonna say which one it is, but I can tell you as an employee at your local level here, well, as manager, one of those four right there wrote me a ticket, and I paid them. One of them got the biggest smile. Thank you, and we welcome you all to the Town of Tassle. This time, we would like to recognize some new businesses in town. Are William and Sarah Johnston here? What about Mary Tate?
Marcy.
Yes, sir.
Marcy.
Marcy Tate.
Yes, sir.
Come up here, Marcy Tate. Marcy is the director or the founder of the New Beginnings Pomeranian Rehabilitation Corporation, and we'd like for you to be recognized and to share a little bit with the community about what your business is.
It's very nice to meet you. They're going to give tickets?
That's right. It's a sweet story.
I love this story. Well, my name is Marcy Tate, and I am the founder and CEO of New Beginnings Pomeranian Health. We have been in this business seven years in the great state of Virginia. We started our business over in Norton, Virginia. We now have a clinic in South Williamson, Kentucky, one in Whitesburg, Kentucky, and now we've got our fourth jewel and final jewel on our ground, and that's Tassle. And I just want to say what an honor it is for me to be here. I actually used to work in this area, I was a pharmaceutical rep for many, many years. I served on your PNT Committee at your hospital back when it became Carillion, it was a local hospital. So a lot of you may not know me, but I've been in your town for a long time, as a matter of fact, it's about twenty-three years now that I've worked in Tassle. New Beginnings is a specialized clinic, we do not just do pomeranian rehabilitation, we do specialize in black lung, coworkers' pneumoconiosis, and as many of you are probably aware of, we now have an epidemic in this area. We have over three thousand men who are diagnosed with progressive massive tuberculosis, which is the worst of the worst complicated cases of black lung. I have the honor and the privilege of serving about three hundred of those men in the four clinics. We officially opened our doors Monday, we already have seven new patients and eleven new referrals, and one of our workers' compensation companies that I work with specifically has pulled the data, and within a thirty mile radius of this location, there's a hundred and sixty-six men who need our services. So I consider that an enormous amount of honor to do, to provide care for these guys. I love my coal miners, my daddy's a coal miner, I'm a coal miner's daughter, and I know how hard they've worked, and so I take it very seriously. Couple, one of my guys is here tonight, and I appreciate that. We have actually been taking care of a lot of your men from Tassle for many years, and they've been driving to Norton, a hundred and eighty miles to get care. So what we do changes lives, and that's what I told Alicia at the hospital when I started, I said, "We are here to change lives, to change outcomes, to change their quality of life." So it's an honor and privilege to finally be here, and by the way, I love your town. I love your town. I love this town, but it's wonderful for me to be here, and I thank you very much.
Where is your office located?
We are located in Carillion, in the actual hospital, in the old outpatient clinic in the back, it's been in here for a long time. So yes, sir, we are located there. We are there on Mondays and Wednesdays for it right now, and then we will be Monday through Thursday in the very near future. We already have two full-time employees hired locally from this area, they're going to begin their training process, and so myself and two of my winter, I guess, or I guess longest-acting employees are actually starting this clinic, because we want to introduce ourselves and let them know what we stand for and how we do things.
And we would like to present you, since you love our town and we love having you here.
Thank you.
A few things, and Claudine, we want you to have that as well for all your work, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't do this all the time, so if we get something out of order this time, we'll get it there. At this time, we have approval of amendments, is there someone who would summon? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Same time. Okay, approval of the financial status and financial report, is there a motion to note that? Motion approved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Conference and committee update, Planning Commission Committee, our council member Davis is on that, council member Davis, could you share?
Most of our meeting last Monday, we had an individual that was looking at opening a vacation home in our community, and basically the meeting was about what the current regulations are right now versus what the regulations will be assuming the revisions pass, and talking to that individual to help them determine when they wanted to apply for this permit. And that was pretty much, actually, a pretty long meeting.
Are there comments from other members of the council tonight?
About to make another comment, reference to the water breaks in town, I know there's probably over eighty, and I hope in the future that we can do something with their waterline system, replace it. That way, we start the infrastructure from the bottom and work up, we'll have a rose paint, have our sidewalks curb-a-gutter, and I highly see that in the future for the infrastructure part to grow in Town of Tassle, because we're having a lot of water breaks, and I'd like to see something come up about this, and some kind of grants, if we can move some grants, and let's get this started. But our water line's been in the underground since the forties, late forties or early fifties, and now we're getting the butt of it, and it's, they're breaking everywhere. And the water pressure from the water plant, I don't know if they still got the pressure up, or if they reduced the pressure some, but we need to work something out on that. That's all I have to say, but the town crew has done a fantastic job, and manager, you've done a good job with what you're doing and keeping everybody alive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from councilmen?
I would like to echo, we certainly appreciate all the work that towns do to deal with the situation we're having, that we've been faced with. From the top management down, we want you to know your hard work does not go unnoticed, and we do appreciate it, because it has not been easy, it's not easy for us, and I'm sure it's not easy for you either. I've never seen an obstacle you couldn't bulldoze your way through those, so I'm sure we're going to get there with this one. And bulldozing is very little in what's been going on with our company works, employees recently facing their challenges head-on, no matter what they've been. So thank you for keeping this place going, and thank you for doing it somehow with a smile on your face, because it's not always easy, but we appreciate your positivity. We're proud and we're thankful that you're on our team.
Thank you for the kind work, appreciate it, encourage it. Unfinished business, update on Lincolnshire Park, manager Davis. All right, I want to give just a little bit of an update on a project that we all know seems to be dragging on in great length, and not to mention it's actually a topic that's on my plate seems like every day, but want to go back a little bit and give a little bit of update of how this came about. The Town of Tassle had an offer a number of months ago, and Jay Shaw came before this governing body and offered to build two new fields, two new ball fields. In trade for that, his idea was to expand his economic background, improve the economy in the area, and also alleviate two fields that we all know lead a lot to desire. So the other day, when it rained, you could have stopped trout, and feel everybody's aware of that. So to me, as manager, it was an obvious positive move if we could get two new fields and replace two old dilapidated fields, plus help a business that today has put north of $1.5 million in this community just in the last couple of years, maybe not even a couple of years. So we entered into a very controversial, I'll use that word, contract. I'll also say that the communication through my office to other boards left a lot to desire. The timeframe in which we had to act, it's hard enough to communicate when you've got months. So earlier in the meeting, the Planning Commission's been working on a project zoning up, looking at boundary adjustments for, you know, three or four years, so it seems like the smallest thing takes local government forever to accomplish. The IDA, along with the town council, looked and evaluated the contract. We sent the contract to Little League, we sent it to Shaw Foundation, both of those boards, being the town council and the IDA, worked very diligently and very hard to create the contract, to where it protected Little League. And I want to add to that, if anybody has any questions about that, I encourage you to come see me at a later date, but we've never, nor are we starting now, going to ever hurt our children, calling for it, and the rumors that may be out there, it's not the intent to ever hurt our kids. But if we can get two brand-new fields somewhere, I believe we owe it to the community and our young people and our youth to evaluate and look at it, so we did so. One of the issues that we negotiated during that time, which is also in the contract, is a temporary location if they want to proceed with any haste. Needless to say, they've not wanted to proceed with any haste. But there was a good recommendation, an idea brought up in a community meeting, which was right here, and that recommendation was that we convert Lincolnshire to a more multipurpose facility, meaning that we convert Lincolnshire to where they could have tournament play on those fields. So right now, those fields do not accommodate Little League sanctioned games or softball fields. So we don't want to take anything away from softball, we don't want to take anything away from soccer, but if we can move those bases or make those bases to where they're mobile and also do some fence work, some removable fence work, just like it's out there now from time to time, fences that you can remove, put in, if we can do some upgrades out there and have sanctioned tournaments, instead of having a parking problem just on Main Street during tournaments, I can have one that in the town too. And as town manager, as awful as it may seem to some, I like having parking problems for that reason. I embrace those parking problems for that reason. So it grows the economy, the businesses in and around the Town of Tassle thrive, there's been events in this town where local restaurants have ran out food, that's a good thing. So we made the offer to Little League in writing. So the offer was made to Little League to upgrade Lincolnshire regardless of Back of the Dragon. So to elaborate on that and to quantify that, if Back of the Dragon never existed, or if they sold it today and left, the idea was to upgrade Lincolnshire regardless, okay? Makes no difference about Back of the Dragon. So a couple of months ago, and I'll have a date in front of me, we had So a couple of months ago, and I don't have a date in front of me, we had a couple of meetings here. A lot of people sit and are asking me, "How come that project hasn't taken off?" And I honestly don't really have an answer. I feel like it's a little discouraging, and there's probably a lot more to it because I'm not a Little League, I don't have any kids in baseball where I'm involved, or softball where I'm involved. So I'm not real sure. I do know this, that it's gone on so long now that it virtually defies the laws of physics for the upgrades to take place and take advantage of it this summer. I just don't know how to do it. So there's not enough manpower, there's not enough time, we've got other projects on the table. And you know what I'd like to do is leave the idea and the offer on the table. I just know as manager, I can't leave it as a priority to be completed this upcoming season. It's just not in my time. So I know that being as odd as the rec director has been hovering around softball, men's softball. So we let Little League know in a meeting here, and some of your elected officials were in this meeting, and other individuals in the community, several individuals in the community were here, but we made it real clear that Little League took priority over men's softball. That came out of my mind. That wasn't a reflection of the Town Council. But I felt like that our youth in the community and surrounding area were more important than a bunch of, and I like to play softball, than a bunch of guys getting together playing softball out there. So if I could create a change in those fields and have more areas for our youth to enjoy, you know, another social activity, grow the economy, it just made perfect sense. But for whatever reason, I have failed to communicate that somehow. And there's been a lot of correspondence that's taken place. And I did today, this evening, we see, made another email from the chairperson of Little The response that I got, I just need to evaluate some more, but it's kind of way off, way off of what we offered to do, I'll put it that way. And those emails are fully privileged. So I'm still struggling with communicating, and maybe it's me. I still have people calling me and asking me why garbage, trying to pick up on Christmas Day. But I just want to put that out there. I want the community to know that, you know, this council, this IDA we have, this Planning Commission, those members are here, work hard on what we do, and I can assure you that there's nobody in local government here that in any way at all would ever fathom, I mean, I've got a young daughter, in hurting any of our youth in any way or taking anything away from them. And there will always be a place, whether it's these existing fields, or new fields, or temporary fields for a year or summer until new ones are built, we will always make sure that our youth have somewhere to continue to play ball at. And, you know, I can't imagine who the individual is or who is leaning away from that. There are some individuals in this community that don't want to see that, for whatever reason, don't want to see it upgraded. And I don't know why, I don't have an answer to it. And all I can tell you is I've, you know, I've written letters, and on Town Letterhead and offered a free ride, by the way. Free ride. Town will pay for it. Free ride to upgrade the fields. For some reason or another, it just keeps, I just, I don't have an answer to it. But I just wanted to let, give council in the public an update on where it's going. I really can't tell you why it's not been done yet. I would have thought when we first brought it up, it would have been jumped on and peed, and somebody would have walked up to council and hugged you and thanked you and shook your hand. But no, for some reason, I just, I don't have an answer to it. But I want to let you know that this town manager and my staff, the 80 employees that I've got, and this Town Council, and the IDA, we're all ready. And we have made a diligent offer. Why it's not being accepted is beyond my comprehension. Anyway, any questions? Thank you.
I felt like the offer was clear. I was at the public meeting. My question is, how long is this offer going to remain open?
Wait, you know, our kids are always going to be important to us. And I would like to be able to say that I could leave it open forever. But I've got a budget to be, you know, I've got projects to move forward to, I've got projects that we've got to do, other things we've got to make happen, and I don't know, I'm just kind of at a loss, I really am. I'm kind of at a loss of understanding. And I don't, I don't know. I apologize for that answer, and I know it's not what you want to hear, but I don't have an answer to that question right now.
I was at both meetings with Little League partial board, union representatives, we'll call them. And at both meetings, they were both receptive to it. But for whatever reasons, once we leave the meeting, editing's changed. So I know it's been frustrating for our manager, it's taken a lot of time away from doing other projects, and I never would have thought it would be this hard to give away money. Taxpayer money that's been well thought out, that the IDA has done a great job of looking at, that, and I think, just to be clear, and I think as time passes, the likelihood of the shop people purchasing Little League field probably is reducing over time. Which means that we're still going to have those two fields, but now we get to add two more fields. And if you can think about how much more you can attract in terms of weekend tournaments with four fields versus two fields, not to mention practice time and just space for our kids to grow and learn the game, I just don't get it. So I would like to say that, and I'm speaking for this council in this moment, that there is not a single person on this bench that doesn't want anything of the best thing for our kids. We've all served on multiple boards on this council. We have people that have been in public service for 20, 30, I don't even know how many years as an officer, teachers. Nancy on the end, you guys probably don't know this story, but when we sat here, I don't know, five years ago, and we were trying to get Main Street going, and we were trying to figure out how we can do something besides have a Coca-Cola machine on Main Street, and Todd met Nancy somewhere up on Main Street and says, "I just need the first person to step out on the dance floor." And the lady on the end is the person that did that, and she's the one that renovated Lemons Jewelers, just to show you the amount of the desire that this bench wants for this community to grow and prosper. That's just one example. So I assure you, there's not a single person on this bench that doesn't want the best for our kids and the best for our town.
Has the property, the consolos over on Lake, would they look at any for a ball field, or a parking lot, or soccer complex for either the high school or the hotel? We've looked at it, we've looked at that property, even made unofficial offers on that property. But even with that, even if you take that out of the equation, we're still wanting to upgrade Lincolnshire. You know, whether they build new fields or not, I can't, I can't even give that away. I'm telling you, it's, I've never seen anything like it. And to believe that there's individuals in the community that don't want to see two new, two ball fields, I mean, the Lincolnshire field's upgraded, there's actually people that don't want to see two new ball fields. All right? I know it's hard to believe, but they just, and I don't know why, I just, I can't, I don't get it.
It just looks like to me that piece of property there beside the high school would be very good for that, you know, amen for the school and more parking, a complex.
It would take, it would take the purchase of that property and whoever, if it's part of that contract, they purchased that, and then they created it. They make it into two awesome fields. We don't have within our budget the ability to do that. So should that not happen, whether it's there or another few locations that the IDA that Joe Beasley's on has identified, if that doesn't happen, we still want the opportunity to have better play and better fields and still four fields. And that's what this discussion was.
Thank you. Make the Little League field update as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, new business. We have the second reading of the amendment to the 23rd, Chapter 23, zoning, and Attorney Pye, just one of the councilmen.
Yes, the first reading back in December, you have, of course, for the orders to pass, has had two readings after public hearing on this particular topic for zoning. I think you might be wanting to entertain a motion to waive the second reading, or if you'd like for me to read, I'll take up the next thirty minutes of your time.
All in favor of waiving the reading? Aye. Proceed.
With the waiver of the reading, this will be the second reading, to be now to entertain a motion whether or not the actual amendment, amended order is to be passed.
Is there such a motion?
I made a motion to pass the Chapter 23 zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same time? Thank you.
All right, with that passed, of course, it takes effect 30 days from today unless council then believes to pass it as an emergency order to take effect immediately. So you do have that option, but you have to make a motion to that effect and have a second vote to make it effective.
I would like to ask council to consideration of that, and I'll tell you why. Due to a multitude of reasons, the Litz House on Mary is being held, as you know, it's sold. And it's being held up right now because of, this is basically a communication problem. But I would ask council to consider passing this motion so to take a proceed on one of the three models and doing the upgrades they need for that Litz House. I wonder if some of you are very familiar with that.
Is there any?
This is a, we had a discussion, didn't know if council would, but yes, I think we're here pretty much on the same page, just trying to help you with things. We'd like to see you pass this, reverse this motion.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like aye. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much for that.
Now we have the first reading for the amendment to Chapter 5 buildings, and Attorney Pye.
At the request of Planning Commission, as also then before you, with the public hearing you had earlier tonight relative to amendments to Chapter 5, which is a part of our code dealing with building, building permits. Mr. Burley has prepared, basically, proposals in my draft, modifications to three different, excuse me, three separate sections within Chapter 5 under section 5.1 statewide building code enforcement, and basically adopting Parts 1 and 2, Chris, you correctly gone wrong on this one. Parts 1 and 2 of the Uniform Statewide Building Code, which at this point in time, the town had adopted Part 3, not Parts 1 and 2. Then also dealing with building permits, those are revised schedule, which has been seen in Section 5-29, that would set forth a modified schedule, basically in line, much more so with those standards around the state. So with your first reading, you can, of course, again, if you can waive or need to, if the case, or if you'd like, I'll go through and read this. This is not nearly as extensive as the Chapter 23 amendments, so it wouldn't take as long, but still you have the option of saying thanks or no thanks.
Can I make a motion to waive? Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of waiving the reading? Say aye. Opposed, like aye. Thank you.
So this will be the first reading. Second reading will be the next council meeting. Proceed there, of course. A vote will be taken at the next council in February.
Historic Review Board members. Manager Davis.
You've got two members on the Historic Review Board that need to be reappointed. And I think, Terry, you had a conversation, and we're good. All right, the terms presently are May 14th through December 31st, '19. To reappoint, it would be from January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2022.
Just a motion.
I move to... And those members, by the way, Roger Weaver, I'm sorry, Roger Weaver and Dr. Terry Mullins.
I move to reappoint Roger and Weaver and Terry Mullins to the Historic Review Board.
Is there, is there any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Roger Weaver and myself to the Historic Review Board? Please say aye. Opposed, same time? Thank you. The Segra discussion, Attorney Pye.
Couple weeks back, Chris had contacted me about an application that was made for a zoning permit by a company by the name of Segra. And Chris, again, you can fill councilman on this if you need to, relative to some telecommunication upgrades in front of First Community Bank. They were asking for a zoning permit, and said that they were acting under a franchise, which they had just been renamed from Lumos. She brought a grant of franchise to Lumos Networks back in 2017. When I looked into it for Chris, come to find out, they are part of Lumos, but it was a merger that took place in 2019 between two companies, Lumos Networks and a group called Spirit Communications. Under your existing franchise ordinance, if there is any type of a sale or transfer, and it would require your consent before this particular franchise transfer from Lumos to Segra, even though it is a partial name change, it's also a merger between two different companies, the council would have to consent to that. I informed Mr. Josh Frith, let him know about the concerns that I had as Town Attorney as to whether or not they would be able to act under the terms of the franchise, the existing franchise, without the council's consent. Sent him an email to that effect, and that was done on the 3rd of January, and I have not heard back from him. My recommendation for Chris is that he withhold the permit grant until we got further information from Mr. Frith, who somehow designated the notice was strictly a name change, or was any type of merger that would make it to where Segra was actually acting under the same franchise as Lumos as the same entity under a different name. And we haven't heard any communications back, and the IDA, I bet the manager asked, Chris asked, relative to that, I think there would have to be a formal request from Segra that you want to grant the franchise basically to them, or the merger effect of Segra between Spirit and Lumos Communications. Lumos, excuse me, Lumos Network, before such permit would be allowed under that franchise. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, let's move to the Main Street designation.
Okay, this is what we spoke about in the work session. If you'd like, if I could read it, or you could present it, or you want me to?
The resolution of support. This is the resolution of support for the Main Street designation for the Town of Tassle. Whereas Tassle today desires to submit an application for Virginia Main Street designation, and whereas this designation would help continue efforts to revitalize our Main Street, now therefore being resolved, that the Town Council of the Town of Tassle hereby supports this application and also pledges $25,000 per year for the next three years to help support Tassle today financially to move toward the Main Street program, adopted this 14th day of January 20. Terry Mullins, vice mayor.
Just give a motion, a second.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Do you have that in line and in the budget here forward?
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Very good. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same time? Thank you. The resolution of support is approved. This time, we will back it to IDD. This time we will back it to, um, I D D, number three. All the presentations in form of Stoney Robinson Farmer Coffee.
Hey, cool, I can see. How fresh is it?
They're doing okay. Got a handout for you guys.
Light reading.
Light reading, yes.
The candle be burning.
There's Cliff Notes to be all of them.
First off, thanks for having me here tonight. The audit is eighty-one pages long, so we're not going to go through any page of that document. Uh, the audit went well. We did have some findings in the back of the audit report. We did recommend quite a number of adjusting entries. And, um, the, the town treasurer is still learning, uh, a lot of the things that she needs to do to prepare financial statements in accordance with under forty standards. Uh, but we are seeing some improvement there. The handout I had, really we call it the Cliff Notes to the audit report, and I just passed out, and we'll, we'll go over page one to start with. And really, we, we're looking at a couple of things. General fund balance at the, at the very top from two thousand eleven to two thousand nineteen. You see, we, two thousand eleven, we were just under, just under $300,000 in general fund balance. We peaked in two thousand sixteen at 1.2 million dollars. And then, of course, the town since several projects since then, fund balance is down to just on, just under $104,000 at the end of twenty nineteen. A town this size, we would like to see it closer to that million dollar range of fund balance. So we think at a hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's a little too, uh.
We would want that too.
Yeah, I, I, I think this might have been that last year as well. I said I wanted to hire it for the two twenty-three, but, um, but it's there. And really, and I'll, I'll mention it in just a second, what's driving that, you know, from, from my perspective. Water and sewer net assets, you can see the end of the year at, uh, three point nine, just under four million dollars. And net assets for water and sewer fund, that includes the depreciated value of your lines that are in the ground. So you can't take them and sell them, but they're included in the, essentially the overall value of that, that system. Including any cash or sequels, that sort of thing.
You have been right there.
Well, they made the comparable, made the comparable, excuse me. Cash and investments, uh, total cash and investments, $431,000 at the end of the year. That includes water and sewer, cash and water and sewer funds and the, uh, general fund. Outstanding debt, $4.2 million between the general fund and the enterprise funds at the end of the year. And then, uh, debt per cap, and then we, we list out your pension liability and what we call O P E D liabilities. Those are post-deployment benefits, life insurance, local benefits, things of that nature. Uh, the projected, um, liabilities that exist. And actually, for your pension liability, you have negative liability, so you essentially overfunded your pension just a little bit at B R S. Uh, the O P E D liabilities are positive. Uh, population estimates, uh, you can see the end of the year, Wobba Cooper City Station had about four hundred people in town. Uh, the total debt per capita is a thousand and six dollars. And really, probably the most important number from my estimation, it's just this decrease that you've had in population estimates. Four thousand, six hundred twenty-seven people, folks back in two thousand eleven, the, just under forty-two hundred in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, so anytime, obviously, anytime you, your population is decreasing, the cost of government gets spread out over a few people. Uh, so it makes it very difficult. And I think that's what we're seeing in that decrease in, in fund balance, in those decreases in your cash balance today, bottom line. Just complain to us, please. Uh, so in, in that regard, you know, going forward with the town, you have three choices. Raise revenues, reduce expenditures, or find more people. Disspread these costs out. And the first two are quite, you know, the more critical ones, or the ones you can really address. Uh, the next couple of pages, page two through four, we have audit recommendations that weren't included in the audit report. So these, these are more housekeeping items, cleaning up things, improving internal controls for the town. I will go through all of those. And in fact, I talked with Lee Ann just earlier this week. She said the town has already started implementing some of these things. And I think the new software systems, uh, that you implemented will, will help with that. Not a lot of people. Pages five and six, we have to audit essentially what you're submitting to the Virginia retirement system. Not only the contributions you're making to the Virginia retirement system, but also what you've reported in terms of personnel. So, uh, they calculate liability and in fact, your contribution rates based on census data. So if you've got employees in their five years, they project what's the possibility of them retiring with the town, say another twenty-five years retired with the town. And then they essentially create a liability for that employee based on those probabilities, as well as the probability of how long they're going to live and if they're male or female. So we test that data to make sure what's getting submitted to this plan. And we did find any errors. So you got a clean, clean opinion on pages five and six. Page seven is our letter to those charts of governance. It goes several pages, and we also include with that the adjusting entries we recommended to, uh, to Lee Ann, to put in preparation in accordance with current reports. Uh, the letter to those charts of governance, if we came in and had a problem performing the audit, we report to you here. You do, you get the boilerplate letter. We didn't have any problems. Your, your staff was responsive. If we asked them or something, they gave it to us. We didn't have any problems during the audit. This also points out some of the more significant estimates and assumptions that are included in the financial statements. So it's kind of something to read in conjunction with the financial statement. And then finally, once we get past the adjusting entries, page eighteen, I have a list of all the new accounting standards that are going to affect local governance the next few years. Just nighttime reading if you're having trouble sleeping. It keeps auditors and accountants up at night and puts everybody else to sleep, so. But the accounting standards board has been very active. They received a pretty large infusion of cash several years, years ago, um, based on some fees that were assessed to public companies. And they're spending that money, so they're coming up with a lot of new accounting standards. I have them for the past seven, eight years. So that's again, like our audit report is now, I think, eighty-seven pages long, eighty-one pages long. You know, overall, the audit went well. Like I said, we, we did have some findings in the back about the adjusting entries that we had. And the main concern about is just that, that fund balance. I think you're all aware of it, so I'll stop there, try to answer any questions that you have.
Are there questions?
Oh, I've got one for you, Corbin. The, the trend with the fund balance is obviously an equivalent reflection of population declining and complementing declining population. If you could comment a little bit about just southwest Virginia and your experience period. I guess what I won't cancel to hear is some of them are thinking maybe it's just us, but if you can just comment.
No, it's, it's really not. What we're seeing, I can call it the urbanization of America, but what we're seeing, you know, our, our young folks are growing up, going off to school and probably moving to where the more metropolitan areas. Uh, so we've got a declining population in, in most of south and southwest of our state, even in places that wouldn't think so. I think Giff County has a declining population, uh, right there at the intersection of seventy, seventy-one. So, um, yeah, we're, we're seeing that across, across the board in southwest Virginia. And it's, it's a challenge, um, because if you lose pop, you still have the same infrastructure maintain. You still got the same sized town, but fewer people to pay for all the stuff. So it's tough. I mean, um, I, I wish I had the answers, um, but it's, it's tough. Thanks, I thank you, Mr. Mullins. Thank you. You're absolutely welcome. My contact information is on the front, so don't hesitate to give me a call if you have any questions. I can help you in any way. Don't worry about me being able to next day. Ask me to help in any way I can.
As he does too. I want to echo that. It's not always been the same with the county, but I can tell you that he, he spent a lot of time. Always looked for that deal. He probably sitting down, probably in the mind, I mean, it's been really good to work with, really had.
Well, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. Our final item on the agenda tonight was financial comments, which I guess is appropriate from.
Yeah, I, I like to, it's at least once every two years, and the reason for that, a lot of political, but I also think that the public deserve to know where the governor body is from time to time and trying to comprehend what he just gave you, the eighty-five page document. And it does, um, if you look at that document and you scratch your head, I can guarantee you that you're not the only one scratching your head. So it's a little complicated to understand. But, um, I just want to say going into January the first, a snapshot in time, outside of bonds or any borrowed money such as for the paving or, you know, the rainy lot that we've done, on December the thirty-first, at eight twenty-one, I'm telling you why at eight twenty-one, but we had a zero accounts paid. And we had positive numbers in all four enterprise funds. So that's a reflection of the mayor, his leadership as council, your leadership, obviously staff and their ability to, um, look at budgets and work with them. So I just, I want to put that out there. I know what it feels like to, to come in and not be that way. So, um, now, five hours later, when we got the mail. All right, we had accounts paid, but I'm just, I just want to put it out there. So, you know, you'll, you'll see, uh, as Corbin will tell you, you'll see thirty and out, you'll see sixty and out. Sometimes you'll, especially at this time of year when the revenues are down, you'll see ninety and out. And another thing that you'll see us doing right now is adding to the due to from issue. So the general fund right now will slow down because of the lack of revenue after this taxing for a while. In water and sewer right now, even though they're enterprise funds, Corbin will tell you, it needs humble. We sometimes dip into that area. They're all in one account of the bank. So, uh, but for a moment in time, we did have a zero camp stage. Just want to put that out.
Good job. Thank you. Public comments tonight, we have one person who has signed to address the council, David Altizer. If you would come to the front, tell us your name and, uh, address.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's David Altizer. I'm the project utility manager for the Thrasher Group in the Beaver, West Virginia office. The address is one five five Blue Angel Lane, Beaver, West Virginia, two five eight one three. I just want to introduce myself. You have recently made us one of the engineers of record for general engineering services. I passed out my card. And we've got a lot of people working for, uh, Thrasher. I'll be your point of contact. If you want to call me, you can call anybody you want at Thrasher, but feel free to call me. And if it's not something I personally will take care of, I'll find the person who does that for you guys soon. We can do a lot of things for you all, just what you mentioned about the rehabilitation of your water system. I will certainly consider this a courtesy, a formal, informal meeting if you want to organize something. I come down and we can sit down and talk about what's possible, till we can have that moved or.
That could be.
With the manager, so Tom, if you'd like to set that up anytime.
Absolutely. We actually have a contractor job. We have, we do have your own retaining.
Okay.
You, T N L, and there's one of them, I think it's who we did in the firm, so I, I do have a number of contacts with you. If you're with me, I'll.
Okay, so I just want to thank you guys, so I just want to introduce myself. I'd like to, we're available for a few moments, you know, just give me time, or do you know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we move to executive session where we have several items to be considered. Do I need to list those?
I'm told I need to mention what was going into executive session.
Yeah. Privacy of individuals unrelated to public business, award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds, involving coffee shop, entertainment fee, award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds, Little League contract, award of public contract involving expenditure of public funds, negotiations concerning the Lincolnshire Parks concessions thing, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation. Is there a motion that we go into executive session? I'll make the motion.
What's the?
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Thank you. We will move to executive session.